One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Calero?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Vance?
Here.
Paige Weaver? Davis Simon?
Nine present and two school board reps. Citizens comments?
I have no comment cards this evening.
Thank you. Minutes?
It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the February 6th and February 13th meetings, and just to note, those minutes were amended from what you received last week.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second by Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Business and finance, fund accounts?
It is recommended that the board approve the February 2014 revenue report, expenditure report, bills payable, accounts payable, and treasures report.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mrs. Shipley. Questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Bond refinance?
It is recommended that the board approve the attached bond finance resolution, and I'll call upon Mr. Pastel after we get a motion in a second to discuss that a little bit with you.
Motion? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes. Is it Mr. Beistel? Second by Mr. Beistel. Questions or comments?
Ladies and gentlemen, you may remember Mr. Cliff Pastel is our bond counsel. He drafted the resolution for us this evening.
This bond resolution is very similar to the bond resolution that you all passed about a year ago, a little bit more than that in connection with last year's refunding. Not all the same members are on the board, but it contains all the action that's required by the board in connection with the bond issue to issue the bonds. This is a parameters-style bond resolution, that it sets forth the outside limits for the bond issue, several of which are set high enough and broad enough so that they don't impinge, interfere with the structuring of the bond issue. The key one is that minimum savings threshold back in section nine. That pretty much determines what the debt service will look like on the bond issue in order to provide a savings. There is not a deal being presented to you by the underwriter tonight. They do not yet have the school district's rating in hand or bond insurance commitment, so they cannot market the bonds. Once they're ready to do that, then they'll be able to go to market, and if they meet the savings targets, have one or more bond purchase proposals to purchase the bonds from you. This resolution is drafted flexibly. You can either proceed with that one issue to refund the two prior series and have a little money for capital expenditures, or it's done flexibly, so if the market is a bit different, and that's not the best deal, you could instead go with two small issues. My guess is you'll be going with one issue at this point, but I'm not as close to the market as the underwriter, so I really can't predict. Once this is adopted, and requires five votes to adopt, I proceed to advertise the debt act required notices later on, and then in a couple of weeks, I think the underwriter would be in position to market the bonds. Once they have a bond purchase proposal that is acceptable, that meets requirements, then that would be, those results would be discussed with the administration, sign the bond purchase agreement, file with the Department of Community Economic Development, and proceed to closing about a month after the bond sale, at which point the old bonds would be redeemed, Series A of 2008, and money would be put in escrow to pay off the remaining series of 2005. That's an advance refunding, those would be paid off another April, I think, of 2015, if I remember the date correctly. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer to them. And ever since one borough forced my colleague to read the ordinance on first reading because the councilman would not waive it, I hereby offer to read the entire resolution if you would like, but I sincerely hope you will not recuse that.
So basically, the main parameter is that the either one or combination would have to generate at least 2.5 percent savings of the principal amount-
That's correct.
-of the debt.
Mr. Calero, is there a question or comment?
I have a question, I don't know if you set this or not. You were talking about it being similar to the last bond issue. I remember the last bond issue solicitor fees were $5,000, they're $7,400 now. Is that a fee that you set?
No, it's not a fee that I set.
Okay, then I have a question on why the fee is different this time than it was last time. I don't know who sets it, but is there a difference? Because I remember, that was the figure, I believe, on the figures that you provided us for all the different school districts, and how they had come in in comparison for the cost of the bond. Is there a reason why?
I would refer that to the solicitor.
Okay.
Are you asking about bond counsel or my fee?
Solicitor fee on here says $7,400. I thought that last time it was $5,000 on the last bond that we had done.
No, it was six.
Okay.
And this is, if it's done in the alternative, if there is a single bond issue with two, even though it's two series, my fee is less than half of that of bond counsel. It is based upon a combination of the size of the total debt, amount of liability incurred, the amount of time, and is basically on a percentage basis approximately the same. It's actually .003 percent less than the last time.
The bond issue last time is smaller than this one?
Yes.
Total bond issue?
Yes. And then the second part of it is broken down, if there has to be two issues, then it's slightly more. So that's pretty much, I mean, that's it, and that's a short.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question concerning that. So you're saying that most of your fee is based on percentage and not actual work? How many hours might you say you have in it?
No, it is not based upon purely on percentage. It is a combination. I calculated the percentage, and I made it a point on the single issue to not exceed the percentage that occurred the last time. But it also takes into account the amount of liability which I incur, the amount of time-
What liability would you have?
If I ever get sued.
Why would you get sued?
You never know.
Well, let me ask you this. Last meeting, you said you and Mr. Marnell, we're not experienced in this, and we're not up to doing any decision making. So we're gonna pay you $7,400 or more, and you've acknowledged that you really don't have the ability to delve into these things.
Well, no, I need a distinction, and that is, I have primary responsibility for those aspects dealing with the school district and basic school law. Mr. Marnell's, I'm sorry, Mr. Pastel's basic responsibility is with the technicalities of the debt act. So we're each doing things, we interact with each other, but they're not exactly, they're not the same thing.
I imagine you could provide us with a list of your costs that would justify $7,400?
I've just given you the basic-
But I mean, you'd put that in writing for us, so that we can show the public what we're spending our money on?
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, I've said it here publicly out loud, but I could put it in writing.
I think you ought to, because I don't think any of us vote on any of this with your fees that high until we know what we're paying for. I think it's atrocious, and I'd like your job.
Well, with it comes the obligation to pay for professional liability insurance, have a staff, you know, all those other kinds of costs as a contractor. And the point I wanted to make was, based upon that study that was done and handed out to you, I believe that my fees were pretty much in the middle and not either extreme of solicitor's fees. And I believe that the same was true of Mr. Pastel.
Any more questions or comments?
Well, that would just create a maybe along the same lines, eh?
I think there is somewhat of a difference of being, in essence, our staff person. We don't necessarily pay staff based on the dollar amount of which they work on, which I think is a little different in kind than, say, when we hire someone to do it, whether it's in regards to selling a building, or it's a different kind of relationship. So I think, I think it is a questionable, I think it is a questionable kind of a number of whether this should, to what extent this is based on a percentage basis, or the degree to which it should be based on a, on an amount that would be similar, for example, to last year, based largely on being a part of our staff or being hired to do this, so.
And the resolution that you're voting on now does not set solicitors' fees, is that correct? That's a separate resolution?
You have a separate resolution.
Right, so the resolution that you're voting on now is to proceed with the refunding of the bond. Am I correct, sir?
Yes, this is the authorization for the bond issue.
Right, okay, yeah.
Any more questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love? Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
I'm all for saving money, I'd be the first one in line to take bonds financing is the right way to go, but without ever finding out from the other companies and going back to the same person time after time after time, I don't know whether this is the best bargain we can get or not, my vote is no.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight to one. Senior old business, new business, Exella Athletic Trainer Services?
Mr. Pastel, thank you, and we'll get those signed copies to you a little bit later. Thank you. It's recommended that the board renew the Exella Health Athletic Training Service at a renewal rate of $17,000 for the 2014-15 school year, and an additional cost of $5,000 for one part-time athletic trainer, and then a three-year contract commitment as follows: 2015, 16, $17,000; 2016, 17, $18,000; and 2015, 16, $17,000; 2016, 17, $18,000; 2017, 18, $19,000, with a secondary athletic trainer as needed for $25 an hour for the first two years, and $27 an hour for the third year.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call?
Mr. Calero? Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. 2014-15 school calendar?
It is recommended that the board adopt the 2014-15 school calendar as was presented last week.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second by Mr. Calero. Questions on the motion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Revisions of the-
I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead. Revisions to the 2013-14 school calendar. If you look at the pink paper that's in front of you, this pink page is the same as the original revision that we gave to you several weeks ago. You might remember last week, we talked to you about substituting an in-service day and using that for a series of after-school meetings and tutoring sessions, and trying to put that together. We found that there were sufficient scheduling conflicts to make that impractical, so we are recommending that we do not do that, and additionally, the same with the Kennywood Day. Many individuals had already made plans, and that was not going to work out well in terms of that being a workday. So the recommendation is that we stick to the original revision which was presented to you, with the last day of instruction being June 3rd, commencement being June 4th, and the last teacher workday would be June 10th.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Beistel, second by Mr. Miller, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Student Assistance Program?
It is recommended that the board renew the annual student assistance program for the 2014-15 year. The agreement will be enforced from July 1, 2014, to June 30, 2015, unless otherwise terminated.
Motion? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call?
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Membership renewal with Western Pennsylvania Natural Gas Consortium?
It is recommended that the board approve the recommendation of the business manager and stay with the group purchasing consortium, Western Pennsylvania Natural Gas Consortium.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, questions? Roll call?
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Overnight trip for state wrestling?
It's recommended that the board approve retroactively an overnight trip for wrestlers who qualify for the state wrestling match held in Hershey, March 5 through March 9, 2014.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Miller, questions? Roll call?
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero.
Just to note, we did have one student come back with a medal from that tournament. Jake Beistel came back, I believe, with a fifth place medal. Is that correct? Congratulations to Jake.
PMEA State Conference and All-State Festival?
It is recommended that the board approve an overnight trip for students that qualify for the state festival to be held in Hershey, March 26 to March 29, 2014.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Calero, second by Mrs. Shipley, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Need a motion to recess the executive session for personnel?
So moved?
Just a second. Anything else, David?
No.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, all those in favor say aye. Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Personnel additions to the day-to-day sublist?
It is recommended that the board approve the listed additions to the day-to-day sublist.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second. Second by Mr. Beistel, questions? Roll call?
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Volunteer assistant football coach? It is recommended that the board approve Doug Pasula as a volunteer assistant football coach. Motion by Mr. Beistel? Second. Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call?
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. JV assistant softball coach?
It is recommended that the board approve the recommended candidate, Chris Hickson, as the JV assistant softball coach.
Motion?
So moved?
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call?
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Denise Barbus?
It is recommended that the board approve Denise Barbus as a substitute custodian. Denise is currently on staff as a part-time cafeteria worker.
Motion? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Shipley, questions? Roll call?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero.
I'll give a couple walk-ons on the superintendent's report.
Student report, please.
And also congratulations to February Spirit of Southmoreland student, Ty Kinter.
Attached is a list of graduates for the class of 2014.
Dr. John Molnar donated the book, American Teacher: Heroes in the Classroom, to Southmoreland High School Library and Southmoreland Middle School Library.
Reading Buddies is an organization at Southmoreland High School that provides high school students the opportunity to volunteer by reading with students at the Primary Center every Friday. High school students at the end of the day walk to the Primary Center and spend about 30 minutes reading and discussing books with developing readers. As a reward for their reading, the Primary Center students are allowed to keep the books and take them home to share with their family. This program is possible through book donations and a reading grant from Target. However, the program is almost running out of donations and books, so to keep the program running, Reading Buddies is asking that for the remainder of the year, people donate donations of gently-used books that are targeted for kids in grades kindergarten through first. Donations can be dropped off at the Southmoreland High School office or with your building secretary who will forward them to the high school. Thank you in advance for your support.
YEA News includes Market Day, which is an ongoing event in which students help with Market Day orders. The official Walk Now for Autism t-shirt design is superheroes, which includes Batman, Spider-Man, Superman, Captain America, and the Hulk, which will be used as the Southmoreland team's theme for Walk Now for Autism, which will be held on Sunday, May 18, at Idlewild Park. The reading night at the Southmoreland Primary Center was held this past Friday, March 7, where students dressed up as storybook characters and promoted reading to the children. Also, upcoming events for YEA include the Southmoreland Elementary School Carnival, kindergarten kickoff, the Bunny Hall for Autism, and Dymors. Also, spring sports have begun, which include both girls' and boys' track and field, boys' tennis, girls' softball, and boys' baseball.
Counselors met with this year's junior class to discuss scheduling for next year. New courses were reviewed, class recommendations were made, and also students were reminded about SAT and ACT testing, NCAA eligibility, completing college applications, et cetera. They will move on to the sophomore and freshman classes over the next few weeks. On February 12, the counselors planned a field trip to the Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center for any ninth-grade student interested in attending Villatech next year. These students were able to visit three programs of interest while touring the school. They also had the opportunity to see firsthand what each program had to offer, and approximately 50 students attended. The following title has been donated to the SHS Library by Mr. Robert Calero, school board member, "God in Our Government" by Richard Seccone, Ph.D. As Paige said, spring sports have started, and the tennis team's first section match is tomorrow at home. We are playing against California. And Pi Day is tomorrow as well, which is a big deal in a high school, because the date is 3/14, 3.14, and so students will bring in Pi-related items and anything circular to celebrate the day.
WIU report?
I attended a meeting, and Claire Duke came, and I did a presentation. They had all the students from the different districts do a scrapbook. Each district did their own page, and they presented each district with a picture of all their students. I can pass it around for everybody to see. And they talked about what's going on in the school and what they're doing, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. PSBA liaison report?
Yes, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen, is a PSBA spring legal roundup meeting at the Greensburg IU. It's a three-hour program dealing with topics such as arbitration awards, special education, child abuse, and student discipline, to name a few. There's a fee, so if anyone's interested, contact myself or Peggy, and we'll get us registered to go to that. Also, PSBA representative Lawrence Feinberg testified at a hearing before State Auditor General Eugene D. Pasquale on March the seventh on the need for charter school reform. While recognizing that charter schools will be a significant part of public education, it is still in need of serious reform. Mr. Feinberg focused his testimony on key problem areas and provided constructive recommendations to address performance, funding, and accountability. A few of his points were charter schools should be subject to the same requirements now required for public schools, including new teacher evaluations. Charter schools that fail to meet education standards should have to develop improvement programs. They might still eliminate the double-dip. Charter schools need to be financially accountable. PSBA is opposed to expanding the number and types of organizations that can authorize charter schools, especially those with no taxpayer accountability. They also have just updated a report titled, and I found this very interesting, it was a twenty-page report. I tried to condense it and bring out some of the points that I thought was the most important. The title of the report was "The Cost of Charter and Cyber Charter Schools." And it asked the question, "Do charter and cyber school schools save district money, school districts' money?" Supporters of the current system say that the money should follow the student, but different school districts pay cyber schools differing amounts despite the fact that the services provided are the same. And they also said that there was no specific fee that these charter or cyber charter schools charge. Districts are not saving money from charter school enrollment. The charter tuition calculation is the same for both charter and brick-and-mortar charters. The districts are actually paying more for charter schools than traditional public schools. And that cost to districts for students attending charter schools increased from four hundred and thirty-four million, and that would be in the oh-six-oh-seven school year, to one point one four-five billion in two thousand and eleven and twelve. And some of the recommendations the report made was the responsibility for funding cyber charters should match all the authorizing entities, which means the state. The state needs to establish reasonable limits on the amount of unexpended funds received from school districts in the form of tuition payments and return the unused balances to the sending districts. The average across the state, I believe I said in the last week's, last month's report, was three hundred thousand. That would sure be nice to get back in our coffers. The state needs to establish an exception to the limits imposed by Act One for charter tuition payments or reestablish the tuition payment calculations. The report was very detailed, very informative. Like I said, tried to condense it. Hopefully, our state auditor general will read it and move forward to help lessen the financial burdens across the state and the school districts. And that's all I have.
Thank you. What was the date again for the meeting? Thank you. Superintendent's report?
A couple of walk-on items. It's recommended that the board accept the resignation of Michael May as middle school wrestling coach and approve him as a volunteer wrestling coach and authorize administration to advertise and post the position.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. It's recommended that the board approve an agreement with Presley Ridge Day School for one student for the period beginning February twenty-eighth and ending on June fourth. Tuition for that student would be twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for that period of time. Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Before you go, I'd like to apologize, I forgot these are non-agenda items, I should have asked for any citizens' comments.
All right, then, the last two items I have, if you've been past the stadium recently, you'll notice that work has begun. Today, I noticed they were taking some of the fencing off on the maintenance building side and getting that moved, and some of the turf has been removed. They did complete a park test and were satisfied with the results. In reviewing those results, I'm not convinced that I'm satisfied with the results because of the weather conditions when the test was performed. So once we get a thaw and a little bit of warm weather, I'm going to ask that at least portions of that test be repeated so that we can ensure that the drainage is working properly before we get a new carpet down there and then find out that it doesn't drain properly. So I'll be speaking with both the architect and the contractor about that. Winter and spring sports, the coaches' meetings have begun, and we will be continuing those over the next week or two, two or three a day, and we will get all those completed as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Solicitors' report?
I have handed out some resolutions to the board. The first one I wanted to draw your attention to is the two-page resolution for sale Administration Building in the Chisholm Land. And I'm going to comment on it as I go through it. Be resolved by Board of School Directors of Southmoreland School District pursuant to according to the Act of nineteen forty-nine, Act ten, P L thirty, Article seven, Section seventy-seven, as amended that, number one. The following described land and the building thereon are declared unused and unnecessary for school purposes. That statute order, we have to, you have to make a consideration for that, unnecessary. And it's the building known as the former Southmoreland Administration Building, the previous in North Gray, parking lot located at six oh-nine Parker Avenue, Scottville Borough. And it's also lot two on the subdivision plan that was reported in the courthouse. Together with all the right claim and interest of the school district of Southmoreland into the portion of Lion Alley. Lion Alley is an old alley that goes along the rear of the building and actually other lots in that area. Number two, the sale will be by public auction with reserve. Reserve means that you will have the right, if it doesn't meet your target, not accepting the highest bid. And you can exercise that right by being present at the auction and making a final decision. On the selling price, it will be conducted by Mark Ferry Auctioneers, Inc., and I put their address, on May ninth at six o'clock P.M., local prevailing time at the Administration Building, six oh-nine Parker Avenue. The building will be available for inspection from three P.M. to seven P.M. on April thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. Now, the reason for the timing of this is that by law, you have to have at least three advertisements in three successive weeks. This is actually a little more than that, and the reasons for that are a combination of factors. One of which is that we had to send a letter to the Planning Commission of the Borough and the Planning Department of the County. And they have a forty-five-day period in which to decide whether or not they would like to comment on the fact that we're selling the property. The comments are not in the sense of a yes or no, you can't do it. It's more in the line of a communication sort of thing, and if they had some great master plan for the community, they could bring that to the attention of the school board. The terms of the sale are as follows, again, this is statutory, I've described the terms. All bids shall be by public auction. B, cash or cashiers, or certified check payable in Southmoreland School District are not less than ten percent of the proposed purchase price. Nonrefundable shall be due when the property is knocked down by the auctioneer. Successful bidder shall immediately sign a sales agreement. Successful bidder shall pay the balance due in full of the purchase price at closing within forty-five days. There are no financing contingencies. So that's important, you're not granting the purchaser the opt-out that if they can't get mortgage financing or some kind of financing, that they don't have to go ahead with the deal, which is more in line with a commercial transaction than the situation that you're probably all more familiar personally with selling a residential house, where most people can't go out and buy a house unless they can get financing. Likewise, you could provide your own seller financing, but in order to disentangle yourself from ongoing situations with that, this way, you're asking for straight cash still to try to be over and done with this, assuming you can become satisfied with the high bid. The buyer will pay and be responsible for all transfer or stamp taxes upon the purchase. This is different than the normal transaction where you split them, and this is because the school district by law is not subject to the really transfer tax bearing exempt entity, as is the Commonwealth and the political subdivisions. The school district will deliver a special warning due to property closing. After the successful bidder failed to pay the purchase price and closed closing, the deposit made with the bid will be liquidated damages to the school district. This is assuming that they don't have some defect in the title upon which they could rely for refusing to close. That would be, you know, if we had some material breach in not being able to convey good and marketable title. Other than that, if they just decide they don't want it, or they couldn't go and mortgage other property that they had to get the financing, and they did not close, you would have the right to claim the deposit monies as liquidated damages for the loss of time and the loss of your bargaining situation. The school district retains the right to cancel the auction before the start of the auction. I thought it'd be a good idea to include that in the event that something unusual came up based upon this forty-five-day comment period, and to reject the high bid if it does not meet its reserve. And next page, property subject to the actual conditions existing on the property, and the burden determining those conditions upon the purchaser. Purchaser is aware that this property is being sold in as-is condition with no representation as to zoning or condition of the building, except that there is zoning in Scottville Borough, and the school board intends to maintain any legal pre-existing nonconforming, that should be use instead of us, I apologize, as office space subject to governmental determinations. Notice of the proposed sale shall be given once a week for three consecutive weeks in David Courier. If that's what you, if that is our normal publication, if you decided you wanted another one, you could do that. It would have to be a paper that was of general circulation either within the school district or in the county. B, the Westmoreland Law Journal, that's statutory. In the first draft that I sent out to you, I included Fayette County Law Journal. That's not literally part of the statute, so I took that out. And such other publications for such times can be chosen by the auctioneer. Your auctioneer is proposing, and I have a separate resolution for that, that it will be by additional publications in the metropolitan region. Five, notice of the sale will also be given by posting the handbills, at least one or more of which must be posted upon the property to be sold in at least five conspicuous places within the vicinity of the real estate. And then I added, this, the supervisor of buildings and grounds will supervise the placement, take photographs thereof, and execute affidavits to the dates, times, and places of the postings. And then six, the president and secretary of the Board of School Directors of the Southmoreland School District are directed to execute the sales agreement. That would be that night in what we are planning if there were to be an accepted high bid. And applying completion of the above requirements, solicitors direct to prepare necessary deed for closing, and to go into the same to the transfer at closing for the purchase price. Are there questions?
Let's get a, let's get a motion, a second. Motion? Motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Beistel. Questions on the motion? Questions from the audience? Roll call.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero.
The second resolution is a single-page resolution. Again, I put in some additional language from the draft that I sent out to you. Resolution to engage auctioneer for sale Administration Building. Be resolved, the Board of School Directors authorized Southmoreland School District to enter into a contract with Mark Ferry Auctioneers, Inc. to conduct a public auction with reserve, the Administration Building at six oh-nine Parker Avenue, Scottville Borough, and then the legal description reference. The terms of the contract shall include reimbursement for expenses for newspaper ads as per his proposal letter, not exceed a thousand dollars, signage for property four by four, hundred and sixty dollars, and a fee of five hundred dollars. Now, the newspaper ads that he would be doing would be additional newspaper ads. And a fee of five hundred dollars if the reserve is not met, when you don't sell. And a fee of five percent of the sales price, of the sales price, if sold at auction. And in his form contract, which he is proposing, and I thought it'd be important that you understood this, no, that was previously mentioned, but as part of the public record. Or at any time between the date of the agreement with the auctioneer and expiration of twenty to forty days following the date of the auction, to any individual who either, one, attended the open house, which may be held prior to the day of the auction sale, or, two, attended the auction sale and was present at the sale, and the owner's real estate was put up for the bidding, regardless of whether or not the owner's minimum acceptable bid was reached and whether or not this individual was paid a bidder on the owner's real estate during the auction sale. And in neither such event, the owner agrees to and shall pay the, to auctioneer permission on the sales price and amount, and in the manner set forth above, owner's review to pay this dismission whether or not the sale is negotiable by auctioneer. This is kind of similar to the situation when you have a residential sale, and you hire a realtor, and they show the property, and you don't close on a deal, but then that person who saw the property comes back after you've not renewed the contract with that, within a particular period of time, they come back, and you then end up closing on a deal with that person who, in effect, was helped to be brought to the table by the efforts of the first person. So this would be the authorization to hire Mr. Ferry. And the reason for doing this is so that you can, he has assurance that you're going ahead with an attempt to get this sold, and that the, provides an incentive for him reserving a date in good weather. And he didn't bring that up, I kind of figured that out myself, you know, sort of need to move along.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Second by Mr. Colero, questions? Questions from the audience? Roll call.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero.
The third thing which I handed out relates to the bond sale, which resolution that you had previously adopted. It's a resolution to approve attorney fees and costs for bond issues for both bond counsel and, means your solicitor board, and requesting a resolution of the board hereby approve bond counsel attorney fees and costs for Clifford Pastell, R. Seaman, Shrim Malot, Cal H. See, bond counsel, and solicitor's attorney fees for those who have taken this fallus. And it's broken down into two different categories. In the first instance, if both series are issued as a single bond issue, bond counsel fees of fifteen thousand dollars plus dispersments of nineteen hundred dollars, which includes filing fee and legal ads, and then my solicitor's fees of seven four hundred dollars. Number, the second part of it is if instead there are two separate bond issues and two bond series with both issues sold at least fifteen days apart. In order to take advantage of bank-qualified interest rates, then bond counsel, first issue bond counsel fees, thirteen thousand dollars plus dispersments of sixteen hundred. Second issue bond counsel fees, eleven thousand dollars, fee plus dispersments of one thousand dollars. Solicitor's fees, first issue, five thousand dollars, second issue, three thousand dollars. On the second page is an email in which I had requested in advance, Mr. Pastell, to summarize his proposal for counsel fees so that they would be before you tonight, and I incorporated them into the motion.
If we have questions, we can give a motion, a second, and we can have discussion, and then you can vote it up or down. I see some people looking, like you. Motion by Mr. Beistel? Second by Mrs. Rhodes? Questions? Comments?
I have a question. Mr. Todd, if we requested the specifics of these fees, itemized types of things, and we didn't vote on this this evening, how would that affect our, to be brought to our next voting meeting, our next discussion meeting, to look at that, those individual fees? How would that affect what we're doing here with the bond counsel? In a time we had, I guess, one second. If we didn't vote on this tonight, what would happen?
I don't know. This has never happened before, and it's unusual for a number of reasons. The, in previous instances, you had a set resolution to go ahead on a specific plan that was already in work. The last time you did, we did do a parameters resolution, but it was only going to be one issue. So now it's even more complicated because we don't know whether it will be one issue or two issues. If, and basically what's going to happen is when the market is ready and the underwriter is ready, I'm not clear from the information that's presented tonight whether he is coming back, Mr. Shelby. I don't know if he knows.
I was under the assumption he was coming tonight. I know he went to the PASMO conference out in Hershey, which is being held this week, so it could be why he didn't come tonight, but I, I know they're still watching the market and still sizing the issues, and we've been in discussions on just how best to take the estimated savings. We're looking at several scenarios there, but I thought Mr. Shelby was going to be here tonight, so I think we, we should have him come back to make a bond purchase proposal.
I definitely, it would be a good thing to wait, hold away to April, that would be possibly a second of another meeting. I, I don't know how fast he'll be ready to move, I would be concerned if you had to wait a whole other month.
Mr. Patonic, I think what we can do there is, in discussion with Mr. Shelby, find out what the timetable is, and if it's necessary, we can call a special meeting to have him come and address the board.
Yes.
Maybe I'm confused, but I, we keep talking about doing it right now. We've already said that the bond market can move either way, so saying, doing it now because we know the bond market's going to go down, if we knew that was the case, I could understand moving quickly, but we don't know which way it's going to go anyway, so at this point to say, we've got to do it right away, it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that, because we're not all satisfied with what we have.
There are steps in the process. One of the steps that we have to go through is on Monday, Dr. Mulhar, I have a phone interview with Moody's, the rating agency. Still have to get, attain the rating, so that's the next step in the process, so nothing can move forward until we get rated, and we have to go out and secure the bond insurance. So they're not ready to move this week, that's for sure.
Then your professional opinion is to hold off, Jim? Hold off on this, or your professional opinion, you've been around this a long time?
No.
Should we move fast, or just wait?
You want your legal counsel in place, I don't know, I can't imagine that Mr. Pastel would want to move forward without a commitment from you to be bond counsel, you certainly need your solicitor reviewing the whole package and securing his opinion on the bond issue, which are the two critical pieces of this whole package, so.
I didn't give, you know, a complete explanation, but one of the things that exists about this is that it's, it's an effective contingency, and that is, that if you didn't go ahead with a bond issue, then both bond counsel and I don't have any bill to present. Now, admittedly, that's pretty unlikely, but it could be, you know, the one time, the large number of times that that happens, in which case, the work that's done is just lost work.
Bond market could blow up on us.
Hope not, but, I mean, that could happen. Secondly, the, and maybe I didn't explain this, or maybe I did, but just to make it clear, I took a look at the survey that was done and was circulated among the board, and I believe you all have this, and the situation is that my, the last time we did a bond issue, and I charged in 2012, that was the 2012 issue, six thousand dollars as a fee, it was the lowest in absolute dollar terms, and it was one of the lowest percentage-wise. It was, in some instances, there were two, Greensburg Salem and Kent Arnold, in which the solicitor and the bond counsel changed, charged exactly the same amount. The, in most instances, on a percentage basis, I was also low, not the lowest, but in the lower area. The only difference, the differences this time are that we still don't know whether you're doing one issue or two issues, and the size of the bond issue is a little bit larger, so that, that's really the...
David, the size of the bond issue is a little bit, it's double, isn't it? Is it double the amount of bond issues it was last time? Yeah, I thought you said it was only six million last time, is it double twelve million this time?
No, 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 no.
What do we, I'd like to, what are the comparisons?
No, the comparison here was the ten million dollar bond issued in 2012.
Okay. And we're doing twelve million now?
You had bond counsel fees of fourteen thousand three hundred dollars, and school solicitor fees of six thousand.
Okay, and that was on ten million?
On ten million.
And we're doing twelve million now?
Yes.
And your solicitor's fee is seventy-four hundred?
Yes, so if you do one, and eight, if you do two.
Right. Your 2013 bond issue was only five thousand dollars less than your 2012 issue, it was nine million nine hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Now, if your bond rate goes down, if the percentage rate's going down, all this stuff with the bond, like the bond counsel, your fees, everybody else, if it goes down, is your, you work on percentage or you just work on a flat fee?
It, it's a flat fee that takes into account all the factors that I was trying to explain to you rather admittedly and artfully, but I've tried to, you know, I've looked at all those factors and self-imposed a, a percentage to be, trying to be consistent with what had happened in this previous result, so that you, but I don't want to go, I don't want to be the absolute lowest.
No, but I understand that, but if the bond's going down, we're not making any money, the rate should go down on everybody going to work, right? Am I wrong?
Oh, you mean the interest rate?
The interest rate goes down and your fee...
Oh, you mean if the interest rate went up and you saved less money?
Yes.
But that doesn't affect the size of the bond issue?
It doesn't affect the size of the bond issue.
It doesn't.
No, no, whether you make more money or less money, doesn't affect.
No, but I, to me, the, I don't have any problem here with the Clifford and Pastel and the, they're, they're, to me, they're in another category, but to me, our solicitor constantly is taking on financial cases, tax cases, sometimes they're small, sometimes they're large. He's on our staff, and so we don't necessarily hourly, but is a flat fee versus being based on the, on the amount, on a percentage basis. And that's why I have some misgivings, I'm not going to try to hold this up, but I do have some misgivings of whether this should be based on a percentage base, or whether, whether it's a staff. We have, constantly have staff working on multi-million budget, sometimes larger, sometimes smaller. We do not base that on a percentage basis. We base it on a salary or on a, on a flat fee. And that's the way I tend to view this, and that's why I have some misgivings about this jump that is coming here. And is this a precedent? If future, if it's a big tax case, do you charge us so many more hundred dollars an hour versus a small, small?
No.
No, you don't, and I'm, so I'm just saying, to me, this is a parallel kind of a situation, and I, I just have some real misgivings of whether it should be based on percentages.
Well, I sort of, I mean, everybody, you're coming to a conclusion that it's based upon percentages, but the percentage is sort of self-imposed in a way, number one. Number two, I'm not on staff, nobody pays my overheads.
I didn't, I didn't say that, but, but, I didn't say that, but you are in a very different category than is a solicitor that we hire coming in from the outside, or a bonding agency, and so in that sense...
I agree.
You constantly take on big financial issues, sometimes you take on rather small ones, we constantly make those decisions, we do not do it percentage bases.
And I agree, and that is, I've already considered that over the years, and self, you know, imposed, that I haven't asked for the quality, or two-thirds, or anything close to what bond counsel makes. The other thing that I wanted to mention was that whenever you do these, you sometimes disrupt your normal flow of work, because you are starting to deal with deadlines that are, just, you know, suddenly come up, and because of that, you either lose work or have to put it aside, or end up trying to do stuff nights and weekends. And, and that's not meant to complain, but I mean, it's just all part of the, you know, there's only so many hours in a day and so much you can do, so. I, I really do respectfully request that, I, I think that the, you know, the numbers that are proposed to you are not out of line with what you'd already been doing. It just looks different because of the size of the bond issue and because it's split.
Anyone else with questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
I don't want to hold this up. It's the only reason I want to go with it, I want to get it moving, because I think it's important, especially with the, with the way the percentages are growing, and I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Calero?
No.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
No.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes six to three.
No, that concludes my report.
I ask for citizens' comments, does anyone else on the board have anything to bring up or question?
Well, I, the last thing you mentioned is the insurance company had agreed to pay some of the expenses for the concrete barrier.
Yes.
Have we gotten anything more from them as far as what they would cover? I mean, do we have any idea yet what the final amount will be?
That's the latest I have, yeah, our insurance broker, Mr. DeFurio is still furiously, furiously working on our behalf.
I'm glad to hear that, okay.
Anyone else, anything? As I said last week, the committees, we're working on the policy that addresses committees, but just to keep things moving along, I have the committee chairs for the committees of the whole, so I'll pass those around, and I'd like to ask Mrs. Rhodes, as finance chair, to schedule a finance meeting sometime this month, so we can get up to date on the budget and work on that, know what's going on with the budget, since we only have a couple more months till that's going to be, needing to be voted on. We will be presenting budget information at the April planning meeting for you. Everybody get one? Get one, Cheryl?
Here.
Do I have that to turn? Bob, did you get one? Do you have a date in mind, Carol?
Thursday's work okay for everybody, or...
Mr. Marnell?
...in the last couple of weeks that we can't, that's not good for everybody?
Mr. Marnell?
Thursday?
Yeah, what's, at what point will you be ready to...
Yes.
Sensibly discuss that, because there's no need to have a meeting for the sake of a meeting.
Sure, sensibly discuss. Last week in March, beginning of April, you know...
Thursday, last week, March, this is the last Thursday?
Twenty-seventh.
Last Thursday is the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Or even the third of April, would that give you more time?
The third would be our regular...
Oh, that's right.
Keep it to twenty-seven, probably.
Okay.
Seven o'clock?
Okay, twenty-seventh, March twenty-seventh at seven o'clock, here at the middle school cafeteria. Everyone good with that?
Sounds good.
Any citizens' comments?
Yeah.
No citizens' comments, do you have a motion to adjourn? First, my Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second, my Mrs. Rhodes, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you.